In the packet was a committee, a report from the general committee who met to discuss the information that was submitted to you previously on chickens. And I don't know if there's any of the committee members that have any comments to add, but this is a summary of what those conversations were. And at this time, they are recommending to the council that no amendment be made to change municipal code, supporting the current position that chicken ducks slash ducks poultry are not allowed unless expressly allowed by zoning in ag and Marthlot residential property, zone property larger than three acres. If you have questions at the general committee.
I think this is a very good summary. It hits all the points.
We will be needing to enforce some of our current violations. So that'll be.
Yeah, and that wasn't something we also talked about in the.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we also talked about it at the general.
Yep.
Okay. Cities administrative report.
Really, the only thing that I have to report to you is that the, there has been a federal disaster declaration for the March, what is, was it nineteenth winter storm? I think at this point, the utilities are at about eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they've spent to rebuild that line. So the way this works is because of this declaration, then NEMA on the state level will initiate a kickoff meeting and we will submit then our projects. And this is, there'll be a little bit on the city side, but it's primarily the rebuilding of the electric line and addressing those, that damage because the work has all been completed and we don't have to like create a project under FEMA and have, it's, it's going to be a little bit easier process. And so we will, we, going into the response, we did hope that there would be a federal declaration and so the timesheets were handled accordingly and we did, we did a lot of project accounting before that so that it should be fairly straightforward to submit.
So does that allow for payment of private contractors who jumped in to help out during the time and stuff like that? Is that all that comes from? I'm just curious.
Right, and you're talking about on the electrical side. Yeah, right. Yeah. If there are an invoice that has been submitted, yes, then yeah.
So as long as the bills are, as long as they submitted their time or whatever, then all of that stuff is taken care of through this type of matter? I was curious about that.
And that it, I mean, it's not a hundred percent reimbursement. There's a, I think it's, I don't even know what it is anymore, whether it's seventy-five, twenty-five or eighty, twenty, but there, it's better than a hundred percent on that sort of basis.
It'll be done, so.
It's maybe something back for.
I foresee in the future, under, under the current administration and changes that are happening, that there will probably be less of the federal declarations and more pushed on us locally. So that's just something to think about as we, you know, from a risk management standpoint, how, how are we prepared for these events to happen because they are going to happen. And yeah, anyway, that was just some good news I wanted to share.
Thank you.
Can you grab me a mouse?
Yes, I will.
Okay, send agenda.
There is a intern line from job description that Ryan has put together and he is hoping to hire an intern for the summer.
Yeah, three pages for job description. Why the job description?
Do you know?
For an intern analyst. I'm kind of looking, I have one question. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Any questions? Ro call.
Creji?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Okay, no public hearings. Have some items not requiring a public hearing. First one is resolution to amend building and zoning application fees to increase publication and filing fees is an increase at the fifty dollars.
Increase. It's an increase of fifty dollars. So it'll, right now, what is, let me open this up. Being proposed to be amended is this little section right here that specifically is in relation to variance requests, request for amendments to zoning regulation, request for change in zoning or conditional use permit for planned unit development application. Right now, it's two hundred and fifty dollars with plus cost of publication, but then we are invoicing that after the fact and sometimes that gets a little messier. And so we've come up with fifty dollars for an increase that covers the cost of publication and then the cost of anything, cost of publication for both planning commission and city council meetings and then cost for filing fees with the registered fees.
So really we're just streamlined, I think, but just make it all inclusive.
Right. They would just pay it in advance instead of getting invoiced for it later.
That'll be a good cleanup.
I'd make sure people aren't walking into that instead of applying, thinking I paid my two fifty and I'm done and then the residents keep.
Well, especially if there's some chasing later that has to be done.
Yep, and that's happened before when they've received an invoice for planning commission and now they're getting an invoice for city council and they're like, I already paid a publication invoice and no, you have to technically publish twice, so.
I'll make a motion if we make those changes.
I'll second. Almost made in a second, any questions in the council? Seeing none, Ro call.
Rappel?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Creji?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Okay, number two, approval of plans and specifications for 2025 Elm Street cul-de-sac and authorization to proceed with construction.
Okay, so in your packet are two items, kind of my memo explaining the situation and reviewing it with you and then the second is a document from JEO that indicating that the plans and specs are in compliance with our infrastructure standards. This, the construction of this project would be funded privately by the individual and then once completed, and we have assurance that the construction has met all of the specs, then we would accept it into our system. And I think Isaac is here from JEO, if you have any specific questions about the projects or a project. It does include water and sewer, not under this because we're just the street, but this, the water and sewer plans were approved by the appropriate outside agencies before construction.
So the individual paid for the paving and the utilities? Okay.
Yes.
Is there a timeframe?
I think this fall maybe, is that?
I think he wants to get done by this fall.
Just in the, in the conversation we had with it, with the property owner, I think it was really his desire to be able to take the two driveways off of paving that currently exists and just, but that doesn't comply with our infrastructure standards and we have a few other places where that has been allowed to happen in the past and it doesn't, it's not, it's not good development.
As long as he's following the guidelines.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's, that's the main concern. If you can do it, do it right.
Yeah.
It sounds like you have the sign off from both Ryan and Travis.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Where could I see a set of plans? Because I live up there and, you know, there's people digging up my yard, surveying, I assume, but there's no plans online, so.
I can, if you want to jot down your email address, I can be sure.
Who's second?
What's your name?
Did you second?
I did.
This is app.
North.
Twenty twenty-five.
The day.
The day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe you can share those plans with us at the next meeting too. You said that's just a circle that we're doing or is extending that any further?
Do you want to?
Yeah, sure.
Yep, so pretty much today's condition is just dead ends at the northern limits of Elm Street, just north of Sixteenth Street. So really just from that, that northern limit is just creating a circle so to give access to three, three lots essentially. So just a circle, watering on the perimeter, behind upper curb and then adding three sanitary services.
So circle would have like three curb pads?
Yep.
Okay. Correct.
So just the end of that, you're adding, you said three lots to the end of where Elm was.
Yeah, I think that was a previously approved plat that JEO was not a part of.
Yes.
I guess.
Right, you guys have printed that in.
Yeah, I'm starting to remember.
It dedicated the right of way for the cul-de-sac from Ken Roberts and Derek.
Yeah, true.
Good, why didn't you just restip these walls? I can pass this around. Overall.
Are we just approving now, taking over these streets, that's it done?
Yeah.
No, we, because we have dedicated right of way and we want to do improvements on our dedicated right of way, we, we're in control of that. And so this is basically a statement that you're accepting these plans and specs, you're going to allow this improvement to go forward so long as it applies with our infrastructure standards. And JEO's statement that it was in the packet basically says that it does. And it was done by, yes, Isaac is here and did the design work, but the review was done by a different individual within JEO. So we have this happen occasionally.
Well, listen, the earlier plat approval created the cul-de-sac, right? The right of way boundaries. Now for the improvements to go in, how is it financed? You have to approve all of that.
Action.
Make sense?
Any, you get your.
Yeah.
Okay.
What you want? Okay. I would, he asked about timeline, wants to get it done by the fall is, you know, that'd be great.
Okay.
You know, but it doesn't take two years to do a, a six month project.
I believe he's pretty eager to get, start, start on some home construction for.
Yeah, so he wants the street to build those. Okay.
Is there any repercussions if he does not complete this in time? I mean financially, it's already on him. We're not asking him to get bonded. Do we need proof that he can afford to do this? I, I guess, I'm not going down that rabbit hole, but if you got to get it done, where, where does that leave us?
Leaves you in a state of having to decide, do you want to finish it or do you want to leave it as it, as it currently is, which is an inaccessible cul-de-sac.
Any other questions? We do have a motion in the second.
We have a motion in the second.
Ro call.
Creji?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Okay, actions associated with North Island's Phase Two infrastructure improvements. Three A, approve the change order number three for a deduction of ten thousand four forty and seventy cents. Please individually.
So this is just a quantity adjustment as well as a administrative correction. If you scroll to the next page, you'll see, there was one of these quantities amounts that was incorrect and resulting in a total deduction. So it's, it is quantity settlement as well as a correction. This was listed at like two, two, seven, nine or something like that and it was, I caught it from, we're redoing it, so it's a correction. At the end though, you'll see on the pay application, because we have previously released the majority of the retainage, that final pay application will show that they owe us money because of this error that was caught, so.
Good catch.
It's not very much, but it's a little bit.
Those are going.
Not very much.
Boy, that's.
No, no, I'm saying they don't owe us very much because there was still some retainage that, yeah.
Thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars.
Yep. Was it a motion?
Uh, motion.
I'll second. And the comments on item three A, Ro call.
Warford?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Creji?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Nagel?
Three B, approval of number seven and the final pay application for any following contractor.
Which is not how much. AOS about five.
Yeah, five thousand.
Okay. No questions?
Two, seven?
Ro call.
Creji?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Three C, acceptance of certificate of cement completion, substantial completion of project.
This basically is what we're to begin, accept the project and begin the warranty period, which is, we see, May seventh, so that's when the one year warranty period will begin. We've done a walkthrough, there's a few minor things for them to follow up on, so.
There's always a checklist, but it's.
Yeah, it's very minor.
So move.
Questions? Ro call on three C.
Creji?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Okay, number four, JEO consulting for public engagement services regarding city facilities. Andrea, I don't see you, there you are.
I would.
You're going to lead off.
Okay.
So included in your packet was, is a scope of services for public engagement and education, education and outreach for city facilities. We have previously talked about public safety facilities, city hall facilities, recreation facilities, and this scope of services would be encompassing all of those under one umbrella as well as some individual conversation about it. I'm probably going to, are you comfortable with speaking?
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to let Andrea sort of fill you in and on some of the details and answer questions.
Thank you. Andrea Gendhar, JEO consulting group. Really, this structure is just in place to help the council of the city with a lot of the transparency that you all have expressed is important as moving forward on city facilities. So, you know, high level, it's the big campaign of what we're going to do and then as we move forward with individual projects, there will be just a little bucket of money that we can tap into to help communicate progress, the funding mechanism, the need for it, anything that the public might be curious about. And also it includes, I mean, it's, it's a on-call contract, so it includes public information, but if you choose to do a public input survey, we can certainly help with that as well. So meant to be versatile, used as directed by the city, probably through Melissa, really focusing on how do we keep the community informed and engaged in the process of building the future generations of WILM. So I can get into the details, but I guess I'll open it up to ask for questions instead. And I guess, as I was jogging up here, I was thinking about just the process that WILM is going through and I've been involved with a few other communities who are trying to work on a few other facility projects, most of them have been community centers. And I'm just, as a consultant, appreciative that you all are thoughtful and proactive in this process and, you know, moving slow to move, to go fast later and being intentional and thoughtful in your process and getting a, a plan in place to help communicate it to the community as you move forward. So that's just me just commending you for the work you are doing, the work you're taking regardless of which direction you go on this, but would love to continue to support that.
So this couple of work is also include like, you know, public education forums and things of that nature, both mine and that I imagine.
Yep. So all of them include like the basic print website materials. A couple of them, such as the Public Safety Center, could have an open house if you want, if that's the best, best method to actually share the information. So the other one we did include specifically with the Public Safety Center, we could do a video tour of the current facility to help demonstrate what that looks like. So intentionally designed to be fluid so we can do the best communication of the, the topic. But it'll take a lot of different forms, I think, throughout the process.
You're right.
I think it needs to.
Yeah, I do too. Well, for, for someone that's not heard us talk about any of these subjects before, we, we've struggled with facilities, what to do with them, how to update them. We, we've got ideas, we've got some plans, we want the public's input. This is a process that is going to take how long? Eighteen months or so?
Yeah, you tell me.
So, you know, we're, we're hoping the public gets involved and gets engaged in this, so.
Well, understand the need, not just a want, but a need. I'd point out, because this was my, my big aha moment, is this isn't necessarily, I mean, this is contract to sign in, but this is our function of budget for this, right? As we discussed in our committee meeting is, this isn't saying this is the amount, it's, this is what we're budgeting to do this, it's a function of budget. And as we need more help, perhaps that ends up being more, but if we get through this and it takes a little less, obviously that number goes down. So it's not a static amount, it is a function of budget. So we know what we're getting into and what we can expect it to cause, but that doesn't make it a static number, which I think is a big point for me.
I guess from the standpoint of public that's here or a public that's watching the broadcast, there's been two committees that worked on this, a facility committee and then three council members, another committee, the general committee also. So there's been a lot of discussion in the background on what this is. It's a big project, but it's a very important project that everybody knows what's going on and I think this is the vehicle, I know this is the vehicle we need to use.
Yeah, to that point, it is a big project and there's multiple projects within it, so this is really to help keep information straight. And I always say on a lot of infrastructure projects, no news is not good news, so let's actually be proactive. People just want to know the update, construction's happening, they're curious what's happening and to get in front of it and correctly provide that information is appreciated by the community but also sets you all up for better conversations as well.
Accurate conversations.
Yes, accurate.
Consistent, yes. Thank you.
Yes. I think it's very important to council members and anybody that's been involved with it, especially myself, to make sure we follow the process. There's going to be a lot of people asking questions and you need to be able to say whatever you're comfortable with and why this project is going this route and details will be most likely coming forward.
I think I'd also, just for the total budget, it's really is that budgeting tool, it's kind of that maximum that we would expect to use, but really we do like to act as an extension of your team. So if Melissa and her team can actually do some of this stuff, we'll give her the tools, the methods to do it and then you're walking into that. So the more involved you want to be, the better, but we're, we're there to help you wherever you might need it.
Any comments? Is there a motion or what's your action?
This is approved item right, I would make a motion to approve the agreement.
I'll second. Any questions from the council? Ro call.
Warford?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Creji?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for part of it.
So work begins. Okay, number five, possible closed session regarding warranty issue on streets in Wilmer Ridge.
So what this is, I know we talked about it previously, but there's a, a construction warranty issue on Wilmer Ridge as it relates to an equipment error by K2 Construction. They've acknowledged there was an equipment error. The question is what is the scope of that error in terms of, you know, how far, how, what exact areas within the street infrastructure of Wilmer Ridge didn't, doesn't have the supporting rebar in the cement and whatnot? And I know Melissa and Joe and company kind of investigated those areas. They, I think felt like there was a need to, to obtain an additional assessment. TL Geotech provided that additional assessment as to the specific areas that the city had a concern with. The resulting effect of that was really to support, yes, there are problems within those areas. Nothing had been torn up and were verified beyond the scanning that, that TL Geotech did. There was then a larger conversation with the contractor as it relates to, we would feel much more comfortable if TL Geotech did an analysis of the entire area. To K2's credit, they did go ahead and hire TL to go ahead and do that. That resulted in kind of expanded a few other areas that were delineated within those earlier findings. K2 then generated a document back to the city, which was, I'll call it eighty percent of the way there in terms of, hey, we're willing to go in, tear out these areas and, you know, basically replace them appropriately. The sticking point right now though is that there was one of the clause within that document that said, if we tear the area up and we determine that the TL scan was incorrect, i.e. there was appropriate supporting measures within that section of the concrete, we want the city to pay us for tearing that out and replacing it. And that's where, you know, myself and the staff really weren't comfortable committing the city to something like that. There is, as when we get into executive session, we'll talk to the legal aspects of it, there is kind of competing language to some extent. What K2 is saying is there's language in the document that says, if during the course of construction, we and/or Olsons as the supervisory engineer says, we want you to perform some sort of an inspection, the language in the contract does make clear in that instance that to the extent the inspection determines there wasn't a problem, the owner has to reimburse the inspection, right? And that's really what they're relying on for purposes of saying the city ought to bear that responsibility. It's our position, know that the contract was completed, this is warranty slash faulty work and that inspection clause doesn't apply to this particular instance and there's just a disagreement on which route to go. And as we get into closed session, that's where I think it's for us to have more open dialogue about, you know, the possibilities and where this might be headed in terms of And that's really kind of the impetus for why it's on the agenda and what our discussion would entail. I knew, I do know since I see JEO is here, one of the, the correspondence pieces from K2 is whether or not the owner has been consulted as it relates to this particular issue. Do they have an opinion and the like? We have not, I think intentionally so, involved the adjacent owner, right? The developer who developed the ground, trying to keep it very formal in the sense that we have a contracted owner, which is the city. We have a supervising engineer and we have a contractor. And up until this last act, I will say K2, I think generally was very agreeable, handled things and, you know, stepped up, so to speak, as it relates to that. They're just pushing back on this issue.
Well, and I, I think for me in terms of owner involvement, we're the owners. We're, we're the owners of the street. And so while there may be inconveniences for the adjoining property, at the end of the day, it's our street that we're, we want to ensure has been constructed to the necessary standard, so. We, yeah, and, and, you know, I think Troy Johnson's at a, at a meeting or two. So they're aware of the issue.
And I think from that perspective, whether it be the original developer, now that people have bought new lots within the development, the city is really pushed to say, we've got to address this as soon as we can because this is a major inconvenience to those individuals that have bought lots, are going to do construction during this construction cycle, are going to be greatly inconvenienced if areas of the development are cut up and inaccessible for some period of time. And I will say again, K2 generally I think was cognizant of that and, and had proposed a fairly aggressive timeline to get out there and, and get at it. So I think all of that was positive. It's just we're kind of hung up on this, this one issue.
For a motion to go into closed session?
I make the motion that we enter closed session for the protection of public interest due to the possibility of litigation by Jovan, the mayor, and Melissa and who she wants to be. I think that's all of it.
I'll second his motion.
Roll call.
Warford?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Creji?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Okay, we do.
I think we need to stay, we stay.
We're going to be able to close session to protect your public interest as a result of this implementation.
Thank you.